So we have a couple of special portraits that we'd like to present tonight. We're going to start with our students that we would like to recognize. The first student we'd like to recognize is Luca. So Luca, we've come up here for you. Thank you. So Luca is a portrait student at Gainesville Elementary School. Luca fits the portrait of a Mayfield wildcat in many ways. Luca is hardworking, he's collaborative, and a modest citizen. Luca has great determination, and he's able to overcome any obstacles that might stand in his way. He's always willing to help others. He's not afraid to ask for help when needed. And he offers ideas, but he also listens to what his peers have to say. And he offers them the words of encouragement. He's creative, and he always tries his hardest to provide critical thinking and work. He also takes a lot of pride in his work. Not only does he complete his daily learning goals, but he also makes new steps. And Luca is one of his greatest strengths. He has a kind heart, and it's shown in his daily interactions with staff and his peers. Not only has Luca exemplified what we want our young listeners to see, he makes new steps. And this is his work. This is Luca, a student from Gainesville Elementary School. And we have this picture of a portrait of the wildcat, Kamala. She's hardworking, collaborative, and a modest citizen. Her self-discipline is one of her greatest strengths. She is as student as you can before you ask her to do so. She's mature and respectful of others. She's organized and very supportive. She's flexible, and she does not like to disappoint others. She's an active listener, she's kind to everyone, and she's very easygoing. She genuinely cares about the development of others. She thinks of others before herself, and she's always encouraging her peers to do the same. She reminds her friends to make good choices on a daily basis, and she sets a good example for others. She's a true role model. She has earned respect over peers and teachers by consistently making great choices and demonstrating honesty. Alright, so Luca is one of our strongest features compared to these fellows. He exemplifies our core beliefs and values while demonstrating every characteristic of the portrait of a Mayfield wildcat. He's determined, he's driven, and he works hard on everything that he does. He's respectful, he has a kind heart, he's very polite, and he's always a great friend to everyone. He's inquisitive, he's curious, and he enjoys working collaboratively with friends and brothers. He's very thoughtful. He's outgoing, friendly, and he's always a communicator and a leader of every group of his classmates at school. He's also very established and well-known in their school. Luca is outgoing, positive, and makes him an absolute joy to be around every day. We also need to recognize two staff members. The first staff member we've recognized is Annette Duff. So Annette, Annette possesses a combination of expertise, empathy, adaptability, and academic skills to provide effective support and services to all students at her school. She's an educator who excels in various aspects of teaching, and she has had a prominent effect on her students' learning and development. She is deeply passionate about her subject matter and teaching in general. This enthusiasm is contagious and inspires students to engage with their material. She also has strong communication skills, both in explaining concepts and actively listening to her students. She's excellent in adapting communication styles to support her students' learning needs. She also creates a classroom environment where students can focus on their learning. She shows empathy towards her students' needs and challenges, and she's patient when students are struggling or have special problems. Her students feel comfortable asking questions and making mistakes. She builds positive relationships with her students, and they feel safe, loved, and respected. Most importantly, Annette believes in her students every single day. She inspires and motivates her students not only to excel academically, but to become responsible, respectful, and compassionate individuals. She encourages them to take risks, to think outside the box, and most importantly, to sparkle each and every day. Her dedication to her students while being, and her commitment to ongoing professional development is truly remarkable. We are so blessed to have you as our president. This is my wonderful friend here, who's been here today with us. Sarah's playing a control and supporting health staff members by enhancing the learning experience for all students. She is naturally supportive, and she provides assistance wherever needed. Whether she's helping students with a assignment, manages classroom materials, or offering emotional support for their bacteria or the students, she makes it look easy. She has strong communication skills, and she conveys instructions clearly to the students and collaborates effectively with teachers and staff members on a daily basis. Sarah is non-adaptable, and she can assist with various tasks and situations in a classroom. She is flexible and willing to assist with different responsibilities. She takes initiative to identify areas where she can provide additional support, whether it's helping a struggling student, career preparation, kitchen materials, or helping with classroom management activities. She is a true team player, and she is always early and able to get the job done. She demonstrates empathy and patience toward students, especially those who are facing challenges. She creates a nurturing and inclusive atmosphere where all students feel comfortable and supported. She also has strong collaboration skills. She works closely with colleagues as part of a team, contributing insights and observations to help improve the educational experience for all students. She is also fun and inspiring to work on a daily basis. She contributes significantly to the overall success of the classroom. She conveys enthusiasm for learning and encourages students to be curious, ask questions, and explore new ideas. She serves as a positive role model for students, demonstrating respect, responsibility, and kindness in her everyday interactions. We are so fortunate to have you here. So my friends, Ma, Leah, and Annette.
Focus Forward, Mayfield! Personalized learning at Gates Mills means we are empowered through a personalized learning approach to increase our learning and engagement while at school. This year, we took a modality test to show what kind of learner we are. For example, I know I am a visual learner. I learn best by seeing lots of examples. Focus Forward, Mayfield! We also have a career day plan later in the school year, where we cover the four E's: enrollment, enlistment, entrepreneurship, and employment. We will have speakers come in and talk to us about different careers and what skills are necessary to be successful in that career. We took interest surveys, and our teachers put us into groups for the day. It's a fun day for us to connect with the community and begin learning about options outside of school. Focus Forward, Mayfield! Here at Gates Mills, I feel supported in my academic journey. My teachers know what is best for my style of learning. For example, when it comes to testing, the teachers know who needs a small group or a quiet place to take their test. This helps us be successful every year, and it makes us feel proud. Focus Forward, Mayfield! In Mayfield, we are given the opportunity to express our knowledge in different ways. One of my favorite aspects of the portrait is collaboration. I get to cooperate with others to resolve problems and achieve goals. I also enjoy supporting my team members and encourage them to try their best. Focus Forward, Mayfield!
At Gates Mills, we encourage health and wellness. We believe in positive goal setting and achievement. We set goals in reading, math, tennis, school trade, and sportsmanship. When we reach our goals, we participate in building line activities. We look forward to playing flag football, Colonel, turkey bowling, building snow machines, and even eggheads. Focus Forward, Mayfield!
We also have a day in service. We give back to the community. Each grade level is assigned to speak to a special task to help make Gates Mills a greater, an even greater place to be. We enjoy cleaning around the village and making sure officers are all to the squeaky-clean police car. Force forward, Mayfield!
My favorite aspect of the portrait is curiosity. I have a strong desire to learn, and I enjoy exploring piano. At Gates Mills, my teachers allow me to have a desire to wander about the world. Focus Forward, Mayfield!
Focus Forward, three, one, two, three! Focus Forward!
Thank you, Madam President. If you were here earlier, you were able to witness a slight change in the format prior to the board meeting. Focusing prior to the board meeting on one of the pillars associated with Focus Forward meetings is our continuous improvement plan. During that time, we formally had some conversations about some of the framework areas under the pillar of Out of the Shield. The next meeting, the pillars will be our operations, and that will be a noted element. The idea is to combine conversations around our continuous improvement with the coffee talks that we began upon my arrival back to the district several years ago. So if you get an opportunity, please come, 4:30, 5:15, next Monday, November 15, to get an update on progress under the pillar of quality improvement, pillar of our operation. Again, tonight, the pillar is out of the shield. And so I have a little report to prepare, I should say, to share with the board as it relates to our students. I'll start with 2022, 2023 state report card overview made up to the school and the district, earned five-star rating, which is the highest rating that any district can earn based on accountability for your system of the state of Ohio. And that's about all. We include one of 75 of the district out of 610 that earned a five-star rating as an entire district. That puts us in the top 12% in terms of our rating on the state report card. And I want to mention that while the state report card is an important measure, it is the only one that we do take in serious, we watch, and in the spirit of continuous improvement with constantly we have to do so that we can move the needle and improve student outcomes. We have other measures that help us determine our success, but this is just one we will share tonight with you as a continuing. Also, we were one of 12 districts in county, 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 county that earned a five-star rating, so we're excited about that as well. Mayfield Exalt Ten is our career ten qualification consortium. Board of Education, Mayfield City Schools, the managing and fiscal agent of Exalt Ten Consortium, which by law, every school district has to participate in. Our Mayfield Exalt Ten consortium also earned a five-star rating by the state of Ohio. I think that deserves a round of applause. Mayfield High School Center of Elementary, Gates Mills Elementary, earned a five-star rating. And Mayfield Middle School, Millman Elementary School, and Lander Elementary School earned a 4.5 rating. So please give a round of applause. I want to go up lines to point out, earned elementary, improved his achievement rating by 13 points in a single year. Kudos to the staff, the students, and the families for rolling up their sleeves and getting out here, and we're very proud of that. Please give a round of applause. Of more than 2,000 elementary schools in the entire state of Ohio, the average achievement score of the top 2% was 110. Your Gates Mills Elementary School achievement score was 111. Give it a round of applause. With the global perspective, that's approximately 16 out of more than 2,000 elementary schools in the entire state of Ohio. I'll say that again. So we don't rest on the laurels of a couple of opportunities. There is our opportunity as it relates to this to continue to increase achievement levels for all students, improve executive functioning skills for our students, grade 3, 3, 12, increase our given identification service and services for sophomores and students, and improve efficiency areas in our curriculum. Those are areas of opportunity that are area of attack along with continuing on our path of excellence. Also, as it relates to Focus Forward, Mayfield, as a collective, this is a shared vision. We went through a renewal process last year. One of our students, there are four priority areas that the community at large will, internal and external stakeholders, all will agree for. Number one, helping develop some of our students. Their priorities that are being put in place and being executed as we work to achieve that goal. The portrait of the Mayfield Wildcat, which represents the knowledge, skills, abilities, and values that we want all of our students to leave the Mayfield City Schools with by the time they leave us in school. We heard our students and the community talking about the importance of the portrait. That's priority two. Priority three is personalizing the learning experience for each kid, meeting every single student where they are. This is in line with our mission of every student that we name. We're very excited about that priority and we're working on it. And lastly, a professional learning community that can build 3K12, that's a new ambition. A couple of highlight points, focusing on the social-emotional learning, we've got the both. The habit to follow and maybe sure that we're giving as many gifts as we can involved in extracurricular and co-curricular activities because we know that there's a direct correlation between achievement and the amount of involvement that our students are in. So just wanted to share a few of those highlights we've been having, Madam President. Appreciate that you gave me the time to give the board and the students.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
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 Next, and we have other super members.
I didn't, I didn't.
We have a certified additional training in motion to approve. Second. What call?
Mr. Pressley? Yes. Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
And next, we have the Dallas School West Stax for the municipal year of 2023, 2024.
So, second.
What call?
Mr. Pressley? Yes. Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
Next, we have the Career Technical Education Resolution. But you can approve this.
So.
What call?
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
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 Next, we have classified donations, looking to approve.
So, second.
What call?
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
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 And that gives us to the President's report and the financial statements for August 31, 2023. We're looking to approve.
So, second.
What call?
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
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 Next, we have donations on paper. Motion to approve.
So, second. Mr. Pressley, before we take the board out of the pile of two donations spoken to the Mayfield School Foundation, as to how it warrants certainly, and as well as Mr. Pressley was on the floor since the last meeting. The donations are $12,000, $20,000 for day activities, $3,000 for educational donations and program funding. All vote on the level of the district. For those that may or may not be aware, the school foundation is sustaining, is actually cutting down. It feels like it was in conflict with it, or maybe conflicting with the loan association and my endeavor to transfer many of its assets to that organization to then re-calibrate and work more effectively in the district. So this is the first of many. I guess payments, not the district necessarily, but the school foundation also will support the academic boosters. They're also supporting the website continuation and loan association. And a lot of us in the spirit of promoting over the alumni and also allowing deeper exploration of many of our alumni. Sure, our believing that they have a special career exploration. Having access to the alumni and the rich experience around the world for our young people. This is a tremendous opportunity to leverage great expertise and working with our children. As I mentioned, the academic booster, we're changing that format and trying to generate a lot of resources. The donation allows them to focus on supporting students versus fundraising. We've got a new president, we're excited about him, and we're looking to future sprechers. Let me mention a caveat for his leadership. Certainly, I know Joaquin, who is great, and he's marketing this back through introducing the audience. Also, so it's a huge deal for a lot of school personnel that are confident. This is going to be very nice and awesome. So, fair value to the donation.
Also, sorry, I'm sorry. Sure, I would just like to say, you know, I have that Dan and I were appointed to the Mayfield School Foundation board back in 2018, and the foundation did some wonderful things, supported some wonderful initiatives over the years. Behind it, I will be honest, I always kind of thought that maybe we were looking at this in some ways, and then all the plans were going to be heard. So, you know, I'm happy to see the joint partnership in continuing to move forward that the foundation have, and do some really great things with that attachment to the alumni association, which I also see that. So I have a great thing as well, we'll continue on that.
There goes, I mentioned, both our Mr. Smear, but I'm proud of both of them, the alumni now as part of that to oversee some of those funds that are key for certain things that they don't go about other things. So, will be very interested in the leadership. That's a good movement, I appreciate the alumni association taking over this responsibility and moving forward. So, put with our focus forward.
Sounds like a great opportunity to essentially merge and create one small organization that can present quite a different possession than it did in Mayfield. What's wrong with that? What call?
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
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 Next, in the recruiters business, we have the minutes of the regular board meeting on August 13. The motion to approve.
So.
What call?
Mr. Pressley?
Yes.
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 And next, we move to the annual board creations presentation.
It will be brief, even though I know Mr. Pressley is going to be disappointed here. And since I can't give the later light shows, every couple of highlights, there's so many questions, and then certainly we move on to the actual recommendation action. The budget itself is going to be developed, and I say going to be prospective in conjunction with those board meetings. So our students, our people, our families and operations will be central or the focus of future budgets to be actually focused by now, now, maybe not in the end. And this is our whole issue is to balance the budget, because therefore we can talk about forecast, but the future is going to be like, and these are the new ideas. So today, this is So today, basically, a budget presentation based on that primary focus, which is again a balanced budget. The budget is what it sounds like. It's an estimate of anticipated revenue expenses. It's typically called the fund level and it covers the period of life first to June 30th, and it's on a cash basis. So for those who count the salary within gap, that's what he said. There's not a, there's not a present here. There are eight fund classification, and I like to do those. I will tell you that the budget itself is $122,388,000, $443.99 this year. It's a $8.6 million increase over last year. That may seem like a lot, that could be a lot of other funds. Primary fund, we'll talk about the next one. This is a general fund that we operate on. That is a fund which local property taxes predominantly contribute into, and that's where we spend most of our operating expenses. It's actually going down this year by 1%, but that's a little bit of a city that's been a lot of month time just since last year. It is way the proportion overall increases year over year, which again, the balance budget which we need this. We should collect that revenue to offset the expenses that will fly in this year. So then that effect will be zero. And next year, of course, is another conversation that comes about spending. I don't think all of that, that's pretty becoming fractions. By the way, I would just like to comment on, we all have the question about stimulus money. We have the stimulus money left from the COVID epidemic. We are so currently, we've got $940,000 of COVID related funds. We predominantly use those funds, certainly to provide iron and steel for staff, making sure there's alternate warning environments. We didn't use part of those because, although we're completely, we used $1,000 if you didn't do those at the high school in Orange. So that's about $1.2 million. So we tied that up in long-term permanent expenses. And this last one, we're looking to transition again. How do we handle some of those items that were sold crap on us as a result of COVID, whether that be NCS supervision, whether it be, A, in supervision, which is happening. So we're kind of, we're very carefully with those funds in some of the, that is legal in the U.S. and they go to the U.S. Yes. He wants to talk that very briefly, but hopefully inside of a place that's good. Okay, I'll comment on that.
All right, so then we have the annual board creations.
So, second. Roll call. Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Mr. Nara.
Yes.
Mr. Sree.
Yes.
Mr. Crossa.
Yes.
And Mr. Hask.
Yes.
And actually, we have sale, sell, burn, tidings for 2023, 2024. Motion to approve.
So.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Mr. Nara.
Yes.
Mr. Sree.
Yes.
Mr. Crossa.
Yes.
And Mr. Hask.
Yes.
And we have the PSI affiliates appropriate service agreement for 2023, 2024 school to approve.
So. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Mr. Nara.
Yes.
Mr. Sree.
Yes.
Mr. Crossa.
Yes.
And Mr. Hask.
Yes.
And the chief fund for analytics motion to approve. So.
So.
Roll call.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Mr. Nara.
Yes.
Mr. Sree.
Yes.
Mr. Crossa.
Yes.
And Mr. Hask.
Yes.
And next, we have financial projections.
So. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Mr. Nara.
Yes.
Mr. Sree.
Yes.
Mr. Crossa.
Yes.
And Mr. Hask.
Yes.
In other board business, we have classified substitute rating changes. Motion to approve.
So.
Second.
Madam President, we need to increase these rates once a month. We're going to do plus now because much like the, you know, I guess the private sector, they are, it's a tax of their market. So some of these positions are actually just above minimum wage. And some of these positions really are, you know, carefree. But, but, because there's employees, it's, it's, the temporary, temporary rates and over the, and, and that, and hopefully the practice is dead and lost. Very much, very much.
Can you go around for me? Roll call.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Mr. Nara.
Yes.
Mr. Sree.
Yes.
Mr. Crossa.
Yes.
And Mr. Hask.
Yes.
And next, I need a motion to move to executive assist. Sorry, restricted exception as for library device code 111221. Consider employment of all employees.
So. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Pressley.
Yes.
Mr. Nara.
Yes.
Mr. Sree.
Yes.
Mr. Crossa.
Yes.
And Mr. Hask.
Yes.